I just say. Okay, well, let's just recap what the idea that we just had brought up. Which was brought up by Fonda and came up during the flood, the idea of maybe putting to use the parish house and by the church as an emergency shelter for smaller. For small numbers. So maybe someone who is planning commission should speak to the parish council of the church about that. And we do have, we do have some equipment until we have a bunch of talks and we did have a very small group of people like Nancy Chapman, who says that she really is getting too old to try and run a shelter and they, the Red Cross has shelter classes. I don't know how I feel about that, but if we had a group of people that could come together on emergency work that we might have had. Oh, three families. During the flood that really were fortunate town that except for the fairgrounds, most of us are out of flood plan. We're kind of high and somewhat dry. Except for the fairgrounds unlike you know, Chelsea and South Rhodes and.
So this falls to the fire department.
This falls to me. I'm the emergency director. So what happens during the flood, just a quick, what unfolds is that we opened up, I can open up the E O C. I can combine it with the command post, the fire department runs the command post and we pretty much lived there during this whole thing. And we, Simon and I kind of run it together out of the firehouse. I can, if we have to, like at a school event. He and I will decide that I may have to come here and that's why the generator and radios are gonna be here so I can open up the E O C here. Which is an emergency operating center. You know, and then I have Becky and a bunch of people, Rudy had volunteered to come down and take notes, but that's how it unfolds. We pretty much have been living this thing. You know, and get dry and go back out and get dry and we're in, the town is in recovery mode, not as bad as some. But we're waiting for the FEMA people to come through. We're constantly in conversation. So if we have to open up a shelter, Simon and I decided to go talk to everybody that I saw, like Elaine. Elaine was an island. Janet was an island. So Elaine could see the firefighters over there waving lights. Like you okay, we're trying to figure out how to drop her brownie from the drone. But if we decide to open a shelter, I can't, I need to be able to make a call to somebody. You know, a couple of police people and have them, I can open it up. I can, you know, I've got the keys, I've got the code to get into the town hall or as the fire department always says, we know how to open the door. If we have to. But I would love to have a group that would come together. You, you very rarely would the parish council be utilized for that. And I know they feel like they're over tapped already for a lot of things. But it's more of knowledge of what you're gonna do and other than that, it's a lot of.
Well, I don't think the parish council is the right.
For that work, but I, I, I mean. But I think, so you don't really have. Rudy and Becky come here and we, similarly at our shooting at the school. Our emergency plan has, we'll probably open the E O C here, the town knows real attention side. That parish house, whether we know it or not, we're gonna put our media and the superintendent, the police and everybody taking notes from here. This is why the generator, we've gotta have it functioning no matter what. The command post will be remote from here, it will be in contact with them by radio. And we'll be getting kids next door.
So there's something like in the flood, we're just talking about a small number of people that really.
Need someone to kind of keep an eye on or.
And then you might need like a pot or something that.
Right.
Mobilize it.
Make sure they're settled in, they have blankets, whatever. If I, if I do have to go that far, Rudy and Becky are reserved. Cause they're gonna come here and man bones. Becky's gonna be taken down all the times.
So I have to say that since I live right there.
We talked about approaching you.
And I would be willing to help that. Plan something like that, you know, open a place up, make sure people, check on people, make sure they're okay. I mean, especially since I am right here, we have people come in from other parts of town. If there's a flood, maybe they can't get there, you guys can get somebody.
We can, we can usually get them there. We had a, we actually worked on the plane, Elaine doesn't know, but to get her out if we have to. And we, we had a plan to get out, we had, for me to get to North Tunbridge, I had to walk the strap and load it down the bound line.
Yeah.
To talk to them. Yeah, you know, some people went to town, they're pretty upset. You know, people who live in Castan near this house, they, they were hit by the broke, it was just like a huge wave dropping on the garage. And the river. This brick houses, you come in there, new people to town. It was pretty frightening for her. That's pretty frightening for anybody who's in. So anyways, yes.
And you, as a emergency group, talk to the store, I feel like to John Houston. They have a full upstairs that really. That they have a generator.
Dear, I don't know if it's still there. I can't talk to them. When we had, we have somebody in store like that, where there's a lot of stuff. We probably have to have someone to deal with them. More, I mean, most of the people we take out, it will be, you know, very valid homeowners, so. Some who just relocated the family nearby. Devin, Devin Silly is on the group to help. And obviously Mariah jumped right in.
Well, I'm happy to, since I'm. On two pieces, the climate commission. And you're welcome to come too.
You tell me when.
I'll come and say what, what we're looking for.
It's just that tree is so fine. I think it's just the little wires that are long. Click down by the table.
It looks like we're the fourth Sunday.
Yeah, let me know if you would rather meet without me at first. And probably we should let them know that we have thoughts, even you know, we don't talk a lot about the school emergency plan. In fact, we have a meeting coming up next week, Summer, I've been working really for over two years, almost three years on it now. But our goal be for that.
I am all for all these different organizations in town.
Well, me too. Well, and we are planning. So I always feel like it's planning and then the emergency response, recovery and then some more planning and reevaluation.
Okay, well, so I just watched the local agenda, it was gone and just. The flood too, maybe we want to just put that on and talk about. You know, kind of hear from Rudy about the situation on the floods and what we continue looking on the flood plan and stuff. I mean, now more than ever, obviously people should be, you know, thinking about the zoning.
Yeah.
So I, I just thought we could discuss.
And clearly one of the things that more prominently comes to mind for me is climate change isn't coming, it's here. We had Irene, we had July 1st, 2017 and now we've got this round. This round. Well, I know both this round and July 1st, 2017 were pretty, pretty high. Did you guys see the drone footage at all and showing her, showing her on Santa Rom, who's on the Alton Times. On her husband had a little drone that he flew up over there close. Now it was unfolding, it wasn't at the peak of it, but it's a great shot to capture, capture what kind of ions or water there.
Did she put it on?
It's on their Instagram page, Flying Dog Farm Instagram.
Probably next door at the town hall.
What was that?
So there's that.
I think we're looking for the ice cream circle, yeah.
Yeah, more of the depth, looked like it was in the dark really, because we were, you know, we were down in the rain all, most of the night.
Yeah, I think it peaked around three A M.
Yeah.
I watched it from out here at four, four P M, had not quite pressed it to make. And then I went back out at four thirty and about it was shut.
After I came in here and Rudy got that door. That happened fast.
Cause I, cause I tied us in the house and here in the barn and looked out and I went back from the road. Happened real fast. And you know, honestly downstream here. These, these floodplains are just incredibly valuable to communities downstream. I can't believe the amount of law, I mean, it's a bummer. That there's damage here, but the amount of water that got stored in these flood things was phenomenal.
It was like, it was like the lake all the way down through.
Yeah, second branch, two days later is still four lots of water. That's a lot of water that didn't slam somebody downstream.
We actually, I actually, there was the road at North Tunbridge. I went up there, got a Missa Morrison and said, you better hurry. And we, we went through, I bet it was two feet of water we shouldn't have been going through. And then just got the signs up and logs and everything.
Well, it's just amazing.
It's amazing.
Trees that come down through, I would say on these that I was just working in Woodstock today and I was down right before twelve comes into the park, it was there. And there's that Stein nature that goes across, that was just that house there. Took on water out of it. And it was just like slime, but then going up twelve towards this jog site. It's just like these enormous trees all up against the side of the, the field.
Well, one of the things Rudy too that stood out for me with this blood stop is the buyout program. You know, especially like in Chelsea. You know, I don't. We gotta make sure, I don't know what the status of that buyout program, that second round that opened up, whether they closed it.
No, no, it's, it's open. I mean, there, and even if there's not a current round of funding, once a, it's a repeat flood. It's a high, highly eligible opportunity for buyout.
We're kind of fortunate because some of the houses that we have in the buyout program weren't the ones that were really immediately threatened that we were knocking on doors.
In Tunbridge. The only one that I know that's truly been a buyout, got flooded again.
What's that?
The only one that I know has truly been a buyout candidate, got flooded again.
But there wasn't anybody. So the ones that we were knocking on door, there are people and I'm, I don't know if they're part of that buyout. And I just, it's just with the change of everything going on, a few houses that got damaged.
So.
I don't know what that means. I don't know if the new rider will change.
The, so the requirement of the flood insurance program is that those houses are supposed supposed to get assessed as to whether they had more than fifty percent of the value of the property in damage, because then if that's the case, they're supposed to repair the house to the standards of the flood program. Which means the basement should be filled. And the house should be elevated at least a foot above base flood elevation.
Base flood elevation, it seems to be changing.
Yeah, it's based on statistics, so you know, if you're looking in a hundred years of statistics, it's gonna take more than a few storms. To assume those numbers significantly. But part of the process of these new maps that will come out this winter will be that they are updated more recently than the nineteen eighty-five ones that we have.
So when, when someone has, I just said, insurance kind of question, so if someone has a property that has you know, it's like right on the river and so there's no requirement to have flood insurance unless they have, if they own the house outright, it's up to them. If they have a mortgage, lots of times banks will require.
Yeah, and the banks have gotten much more aggressive about requesting that information.
The insurance companies, if one the crisis isn't really going on.
Well, and so I did look into, there, there's no charge to the town for participation in the flood insurance program.
Okay. They just had to vote to participate, is that what the select board had to sign up on?
And in order to participate, we have, that's how we got flood hazard ordinance. Cause in order to participate, you have to adopt an ordinance. That takes measures to prevent, to take proactive measures to, to reduce flood damages. That's, that's the carrot.
Rudy, can you be? Well, sorry. Well, so I have a question and this is for existing houses. Who, I mean, people are trying to build a flood plain, that's what you were talking about. That's a problem.
I don't know, that's what we, we try to not have happen. We don't have a lot in our floodplain and like I said, these floodplains are really valuable. In this storm, partly because we don't have a lot of, a lot of development. I don't know, has anybody seen the Moxley Bridge? Is, is how is that a long-term repair? Is it repairable?
You know, I don't know. Some of the stuff like the Strathford Road, if you talk about our town, that's gonna need an architect. An engineer. And you guys all know that the Strathford Road took a hit and if you drive off it, you may or may not notice. But that crap that was starting, that's gone much further out.
Yeah.
It was already like at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, roughly, an estimate. And then halfway up the road, we had two landslides. One of them we did an emergency patch on, which actually was like a very solid patch because they had trucks. We had trucks and then I happened to drive that way to get back to the fire department and saw Sean Kangy out there. Going to stone, it's going, and the old historic stone covered by their house said, over, came over again. And actually while we were standing there in the rain, I thought, whoa, now we got thunder for the first time. Then I realized it was under ninety. It was the rocks, it was the rocks. Just came over there. So that's gonna, that's gonna be an issue. It had a lot of debris, but it over it overtopped again and it's fragile and now that has collapsed on the inside, so they tried to.
And so this is something, this is part of the dance that's gotta go on now because we're allowed to do temporary fixes to make it passable. But if we want funding to actually include those structures, we've gotta have documentation that shows what was done as temporary and, and how that's temporary and so I have not been able to find anything about that being a historic structure. We've, we've repeatedly put it back together and it's repeatedly plugged. And, and this is the point where the climate change thing starts to really feed in because you know, bridges worked this round. And culprits that were sized properly worked and, and they'll pass really large wood. We're never gonna get rid of all the wood upstream. Ideally, we size structures that can, that can pass with. Because that part of the dynamics in healthy streams. So it's, it's tricky. Um, you know, there's just nowhere for that road to go on the Strathford Road and Dickerman took a heavy hit this round two and there's just not a lot of places for that stream to go either.
I get the list of roads in my car and we're about one. I, it's gonna be like, it doesn't have, actually Kim, Kimmerack, he told Victoria Paquin and myself, we've been on emergency meetings every day. That we can start to do more solid fixes, but that one on the Strathford Road is so expensive. That they want you to get, of course, anything in the river has to have anyone. You know, they have to be notified and that, and that should need some engineer to go up and down and tell us what to do and how to do it. So we gotta wait on that, but we're allowed now, as Kim said, to go ahead and do more, even if it's more permanent fixes, we just document, document, document. Everything the bear does, they should be documenting every move they do down, you know, just in case.
They're not. They're not municipal.
No, they're not, but they're, they're a tax exempt, when they come here, when they are gonna look at nonprofits. They're, they are not actually a nonprofit, they're like a tax exempt.
They have a very funny.
Five of the one C five. Yeah, I looked it up long, so when we're being at home here, we can say, can we include that? Is there any way we can include it? Cause they're gonna talk to nonprofits along with, that's what I'm, I got from my list.
And, and this is part of the dance at this point, so technically that what's going on down there should, should have been, we should have been on local flood. Flood hazard.
You mean to do the excavation work and ruin that down?
I've been down and taken a bunch of pictures and talked to both Matt and Bob Child, we've worked in down here today. The main thing is, is they can't change the elevation, they're working in the floodway right now. So you can't change the flood flows. I think we've seen why things get really unpredictable really fast. So I'm hoping.
So any, any, any insurance repair has to be, just has to be like patched back to the way it was. And then we have to be funded for a larger.
Guidance is a threat to life or existing infrastructure. If there's an immediate threat to life or existing infrastructure, then an immediate threat means there is a possibility of collapse within seventy-two hours.
And Kim says we've now gone on to another stage where if some of our work is more permanent, keep on with that as long as we talk. Well, I'm just thinking. It's very confusing, it literally, as I sat in the meeting today, I got confused. So I noticed that Victoria was on it, I was sitting with her and Kim called. You, you know who I mean, Kim. So she's like the head honcho for the FEMA stuff around here and she said, yeah, it's okay if you start to do like Broadbrook is completely collapsed, sixteen feet down. And they can start to do something that's gonna be more permanent, like we did something on Strathford Road that's probably more permanent on one of the landslides and it's okay. We could put it under emergency at first, but it's okay that it's.
I was just thinking of the grant and thinking like, well, that's already like in the pipeline, so obviously we repair roads so they don't have roads that are commissioned and they're dangerous for three years, but then that's supposed to pay for us, you know, scoping and an engineer to come in, I don't know.
And it was part of the, you know, a big part of that brick brand. Looking at the overall picture, so you know, Brent's pointing out that if the track the road ends up going, undergoing extensive repairs, we've, we've gotta figure out alternative routes for emergency vehicles.
It, it's actually quite a problem because it rots and it could be a million dollar repair. So it really worked that. In my road, Drew Road, is so narrow that if we put all our traffic on there, it's not really a two-way road. Especially if you have large trucks that are doing deliveries. Uh, we're gonna be pulling people out of ditches, you know, wrecked and ditches, you can't, not gonna be able to pass them.
Why, I mean, I don't know what the timeframe was for that, but the brick that should, we should be, have the scoping studies start next year, I think. It at least allows us to unlock funding to do the repair work, so I'm getting that, we get grants.
Needs to happen sooner than when.
Yeah, I think, you know, the repairs are gonna happen this, they're gonna be separate from that. Cause really the brick brand was a planning brand. Um, it was not an implementation brand.
I'm hoping the second lot of the FEMA stuff on part of the Strathford Road more immediate, but if you just do this. Right now, Orange County isn't even targetable, they're going around today trying to send out little FEMA teams. To get, to get Orange County in counties declared like when the.
Pete Fellows is here on Tuesday doing that.
Yeah, I was with him in Chelsea.
He came here first.
He did, they're trying, so they're doing the initial, our regular FEMA visit was still down the road, I'm having a hard time. Like keep, everything still keeps coming in to me and I send it on to I send it on to our grants administrator and Mariah and the treasurer, because they're all trying to juggle. How this is all gonna unfold and document everything. I just got notices tonight on next steps that were allowed and not allowed. So, but to go back to the planning commission part of her.
That's what I was gonna say, it sounds like, I mean, people have their hands full with this. What, that's, what can we, what's our role here? How can we kind of get in here and get ahead and help?
Sent the document to Brenda, Mary Ann, Becky and Mariah, but I should have sent it to the planning commission as well. Put together by the Windham Regional Commission after Irene. And it's a municipal flood emergency manual. And it's like nine pages long and it's full of like, here's the steps, here's the resources, here's the numbers. I'll send that right now.
I'm just sorry, I didn't get that with it. So Chelsea and Converge, this is, FEMA people have been in Chelsea, or is that what you said?
They were, they were in our. They were in our area. They're doing, it was confusing because I thought they were the ones that were coming here. Talking with about our roads. But it's an initial, like a strike team. Going out to get Orange County. See if there's enough damage. You have to meet a certain sum of money to, to be part of it. Oh, I can't imagine we're not gonna make it. Chelsea got, got here. Williamson got here. Washington's got some serious stuff. Even the Stratford Row, when they called me, they all through the storm and they kept. Calling and saying, Woody. Because we were in contact with Rob the whole time. You know, we give them our radio. It'd be nice. The planning was that we encouraged a select for the foot. More updated radios and each one of the. Soundtracks. Feel a lot easier on. Because we're running a command post. We, and we definitely are all working together, but communications is struggling. It was. Fifty percent of it was the other, the other part came through, um, emergency management. With half of it came from the town somewhere. So they, they signed some of the ARPA money so it didn't have to come out of the town.
But it happened, but they're not purchased yet or they're.
Oh, I purchased every new back order. Oh, okay. And I have to have it installed up and running by September fifteenth. So we're getting hopes. And what held me up. So I can want. For a minute, what held me up was this story. For months. Disrupting the historic service since I was building to put the generator down. I still, I mean, I could feel myself. Yeah, I'll have to go through. We asked you, you notice when the deadline, I thought I did the staff order. You know, we're gonna get held up. And she said, I've got a month legal. And then she took two and a half. And you just have to sit back. Mary Ann was.
So we are the funds that could use for these radios.
Some of our funds paid for our hats. And then the rest of it I got through, but it will now it's just waiting, David. Yes, they're coming. We're on the list and, and the good thing is, I think right now Chelsea and Royalton, which they have gone for that too. So we are doing some things. It's a lot, it's a lot. Grants are, you know, Rudy knows from the trails grants, they're not as easy as people think they are. I spent a lot of hours and I'm just getting that. We wonder if I was getting paid, it wouldn't work.
Well, I mean, the planning commission isn't like command control for this kind of stuff.
No, but I, I, I think that.
So that's what I was thinking.
Working with Rudy on the flood, the new flood map. And pushing for this brick grant, we still have. It almost, the radio came in and had the road prober off and work on the spring row and it was like, oh. The second brick area that we were looking at. And it started to and they filled it and stopped it. So some of the planning, I think we need to forge ahead and we need to pay attention to what Rudy's saying about the.
Sometimes. The blood stop problem is that people don't pay attention to those things until it's too late to.
Well, I think we're, I think Rudy's really got us on it. So we'll be, we're, and we've got some fortunate groundwork here in Tombridge, just except for the fair roads.
And I'm wondering. Capitalizing this event to, to communicate to the town like, you know, the last TQ we were saying. You do it, don't it? You can't build a water plant. You have to get a proper permit, you know, in order to kind of get that word out, even though.
It might be the time to notify people. I have to look at. I apologize for not remembering better what was in the TQ, but did we mention that the maps are coming out? For you, so. You know, I think now it's time for. Um, people to be aware of that. And that we will be updating. The flood hazard anyways.
So you know, the party that we sold that. They, they have accepted.
Yeah, and it was the weirdest thing, so. The beaver dam that was removed up there. When, I'm not sure who removed that, but when they dug it out. Piled the dam and the remains. In the center perpendicular to the flow. That shouldn't happen, but it's really hard to. Do anything about it afterwards. Um, when Tim Barnaby had that property, he also dug a pond there. And the. Part of the soil that we removed from there got piled in the same area. So what happened? In the flood was the stream that comes down off the monitor. Split one side of those fires. And the first branch split the other side. That's that system didn't flood. It went on either side of it. And, and if you look now, the, the weeds on top of there are still standing. They didn't get flattened. Brunt floodproof. In, in fear. It, you know, it had a neat requirement. It was done. To the specs by a certified engineer. So they, they got a permit for it, but. The process is that we are, we don't have a development review board. So when stuff like that comes in. It comes to us. Have, have you ever reviewed? Anything like that?
No, no. So, so what you're saying is we should have a review.
And that.
That's gonna be.
Design, I can show you the design. It has a stamp on it from the engineer. That says this probably should be reviewed by Dan O. But we didn't submit it to Anna. He only gave it to us. So when I showed it to drinking water. And wastewater. So things like that happen.
And you can't undo it.
It's got a point then. Legally installed.
But if, uh, in the next flood. The system gets taken out, if the water goes over there, does, does that change?
My guess is if it was to wash away, it would have to. A, a new system would need a new permit. I'm, I'm pretty sure. Don't recall if there are specs. Usually they have specs on there for a replacement.
Right, right, yeah.
So it may be on there. I'm not sure where that is. You're out of here and? Yeah. You got a game, you said?
No.
Oh, you got. Well, thank you for coming over here and squeezing us in.
Shortly, I'm hoping to go over there too.
Sorry, I'm a little, follow you, Matt.
I think we all are right now. We've got so much going on.
Well, I'm just trying to think like, how, how, what's the best way for us to?
There are some specific bullet items in that municipal guide.
Okay, for Wyndham County that you.
Yeah, okay.
Well, maybe that's what I'll do. I mean, I'm. And then.
You know, there's some stuff that's. Uh, recommended for preparation before a flood. And there's some stuff as the flood unfolds. And then there's some stuff for recovery. And there are specific items called out for town, town committees.
Can we get some hard copies printed down here using the?
Yeah.
Paper down here. I was thinking.
Small document.
Yeah, hard copies are nice.
Yeah, I actually can.
Entire section of a town website plans and policies.
Yeah, I think ultimately that's kind of what we should be looking at.
Hard focus.
Yeah, I'm just thinking in the interim, just even more basic than that, like how do we? Size the TQ sort of way, but you know, planning patient to just make it clear and hang out with us. Crisis moment of the flood. It's a good time to review next step and procedures and.
Mm-hmm. Isn't that gonna happen when the new plans come this winter and then? We talked about, um, town meeting and maybe some, you know, when those maps are out. After they come out, having the, like the meeting where there's explained what the. Difference, you know, what this means to the town now and. Maybe some ideas about how the tax would move forward with the ordinance about. Review of projects that are happening.
And I, I think Amy, we shouldn't have brick grant. We're not done. Like the spring row, obviously it's frail. I would push the brick. Right now, everybody I can tell you that you're gonna be talking to Stephanie Smith or any of them. Are on the email like, I don't know when she's sleeping, because she's even sending me emails like at nine o'clock at night. But I would, as soon as this calms down a bit. I'd be saying, you know, it became evident. That we, we've got to push the straight grant. Through a little faster if we can.
Well, she can do that, but it's worth noting. I like that they put you better. I mean, we could model.
Yeah, it's real readable.
Yeah, and it's short enough that you're not like.
Or something that maybe could even be made a little bit more concise and. Given to, so like if we have a meeting, so they can.
Well, maybe we can look at it and, um, use that as a template or something that we can hand out. Maybe that's one of our things for that meeting.
And I know you were saying, we, like, also just to make sure people who are moving to town or considering building in town, make them very well aware of it. Like you really shouldn't be making huge changes to things in the country or adding. New structures or whatever it is, right?
So.
One person I can tell you Rudy, this is a good thing. You never know it. Is one individual who built the fence around your garden. So it was a real eye opening for them. When it came, the warnings came true, that how it just got destroyed and helped things out.
I was just thinking about things that are upstream, right? There's wetlands that. Containing water and slow the process of water coming rushing down. So it's not just what happened right here in the, the valley bottom. But it's what people do. That makes a difference to how the water moves.
One of the things that's recommended. Because of the type of. We have flash flooding and not typically an invasion flooding. Is that. Pound the dock or river quarter or. In addition to the flood hazard area, which is what's required for. International Flooding Insurance Program and only applies to the first grant. Bound to be. Bound to have. permissions to, because people like to put things close to streams a lot of times, so. The recommendations are of fifty foot buffer around even small streams. And that's sort of kind of often situations. Larger depending on the size of the stream, so if we get driven down in the valleys. If we were to adopt something like that, then we get another.
Yeah, it's like five or seven percent.
Uh, percent match on the.
It's the most we can get if we do.
Right. We, we currently. Brenda has done a great job of getting our timing and our local emergency operations plan. To fit with their calendar. So that we qualify for an additional seven and a half percent, I think, on that one. And then. We need. To be thinking about it as a mitigation plan. And we don't update news on that.
That we have.
Twenty-one when we finally got adopted.
I, I'm not good with dates, really, I don't remember. But we have to keep that current because that gives us a good jump at a FEMA.
And then the flood hazard ordinance is the other one, and we should be updating that for twenty twenty-six.
You're saying if we were able to adapt a river quarter.
Additional match on the, uh.
On the FEMA re, um, reimbursement. Way like, there's a quarter meaning.
It varies from town to town, so, um. Some towns would just. Was on the major rivers and increases the setback. In some areas over what the. Flood hazard is because the flood. Hazard maps only show what's gonna be inundated. And more the threats in a lot of places around here are erosion on the valley walls. And sudden collapses and sudden. Complete shifts of channel courses. You get a debris jam and suddenly one. Stream goes to the other valley.
And that actually was a debris jam, it turned out on the Stratford. If you look up Dickerman. Rod had me go up and look, he's the, or broke up there. You see all the debris, the trees all came down. And it's a lot. So. Very few towns, a handful of towns in Vermont have done the river quarter as part of it. But I bet more. But more are gonna be looking at it because these little rivers are shocking us. These little brooks are shocking us.
You know, I would. Really like to see us get a. Something to replace the. There, there's a very unusual. Concrete culvert right above that spot that is triggering those mass failures along those valley walls. It's. It's. An eight foot culvert. Yeah, a twenty-six foot stream.
Where, where's that?
On Dickerman.
On Dickerman.
And it has a bend in the middle and then it goes out into the top of that. Little valley there, where all the trees are coming down. It's got a bunch of landsides from this. And it's, you know, it's like putting the finger over the garden, you know, it's. So. You know, that, that's, that's one where I feel like we could be proactive, that, that. Culvert didn't fail. There's nothing that's gonna flag that for replacement. Cause the whole is fine. But it's triggering all sorts of necessary events, I mean.
So instead by wear hearts, just above where hearts travel.
Just for.
Actually, you go up the whole Dickerman, keep your eyes peeled. There's a bunch of landslides. You know, a lot of it's natural, but there's no houses there. It's just nature doing its thing. We don't need to add to it. And then houses being in shock because there are bridges and houses are now. Damaged. I think that fifty.
And actually a little piece saying about the one. Just that stream of that.
Yeah. Who helps us do a river quarter? Do, who helps us, uh, look at that and find out what the?
We. Have assumed the Nordic assessment for the first branch that was done in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen. That. Showed the width of the, the river corridor. And. There has now been some radar based stuff that also has. Done analysis statewide or now for, uh, most streams. So.
It's an in-house thing to just decide for it?
No, you can find it on the, online when they.
No, I mean, when we go to find it online to actually draw up to where eligible for it. I keep thinking of the FEMA reimbursement, but FEMA is. FEMA is the stick. To try to do a carrot of us trying to plan for this not to.
Yeah, and FEMA's. FEMA's the flood hazard area, so. FEMA's. The flooding insurance program and they're only dealing with the first.
No, I mean a reimbursement. The reimbursement, if you participate in the Florida border, gives us that much more money.
Me who's certified.
Yeah. There, there are. I picture them as being. You know, we get a, we get a carrot.
Yeah.
If we do what they.
And I.
Think is the right thing to do.
State. Funding for that piece. But ultimately, it probably can, it's gonna help the federal laws as well.
There'd have to be some kind of process where we identify it and someone signs off and says, yes, you now have a river quarter identified, you know.
Need to be, and I, I would think something like that would be a town vote. Or.
That we would like to, to identify the river quarter.
And if we were to adopt it, I, I think that should be. Proposed to. I'd want something like that to be. Well notified to the town at, at large.
I guess I would also. You know, like us to quietly see how we impact. People, the ones existing, the ones that may have property there, so we can answer those questions or even go there.
Yeah, we could pick the all part of the same meeting, maybe a series of meetings about the new plan.
And, uh, Geo. On it for, uh. Talking as well because world moved on through a similar process right now. And he wondered if this could actually be a multi-time conversation.
That, that'd be interesting. Yeah.
Like from Chelsea. Yeah, all the way down to. Washington. So it's the first branch. I don't know if this is trying to know exactly where it starts.
They're up in Washington Heights.
On the dog.
Where the landslide was.
And the far as it extends. It just barely goes into corner of current. Riders corners.
Yeah. Right. Well, it sounds like we have some work. I think that, that you send is a good thing to start looking at.
And I think in terms of. You know, public input and meeting. I think it might be good for us to be thinking about. In conjunction with the. Map releases in the winter. Will give us some time to. Cause it's July already and we've got it there in between and. It's gonna be winter before we know it. So I, I think honestly. It might be a good thing to dovetail those conversations.
Yeah, I, I agree. We get a lot on our plate. Going on.
And the flood will still be freshening people's minds.
Yeah.
And they won't be.
And we may know more. There may be some changes and. Information for us that comes out of this.
And so I, I think. Looking at the flood hazard ordinance, I, you know, I was supposed to highlight. Some of the, uh, areas for particular review, the, the map question is gonna be the big one. Um, because. Having these new maps is essentially gonna make. Our quote unquote official map data. And I'm gonna highly recommend that we adopt, adopt the new map. Um, because it's all under nineteen ninety-one hard copy and it's really difficult to read. Unworkable in this digital age.
That was a bad site. It was not a good. Thomas just went up with the backhoe.
And then beyond that, the. Whether we would wanna adopt any sort of report or relate to it. And whether we think the development standards. Which is section nine. Well, adequate. And probably more important than adequate. Clear enough to not lead a lot of debate. Or confusion.
Then I think, um, a few of us should take a close look at the. Plan that you gave us.
Yeah.
A Wyndham and, and use that. See if we can make it ours or, you know, take things out of it that we're. I'll take a look at it too from my point of view.
And do we have anything that's like an easy handout? We're not ready as a team. Like what they have. I, I mean, does emergency management have anything?
Wait, for, we, emergency management has. Mostly handouts that tell you, you know, make sure you have water put aside and. Batteries and things like that. You know, the usual stuff you hear all the time about being prepared. Which probably isn't a bad idea. I found out we've got a lot of new people in town and during this flood, we have people. And this is a strange area of the world for them to live in. And they were. Quite unused to. No power for a week or so.
Being here because many meetings ago, we talked about neighbors helping neighbors and how to. Work with them and how people know what's going on and I don't know. It's like. Connections that people have all these. There must be like, there's a list of, you know, who's purchased land, right?
Yeah.
So that's one way to get people's names to make sure they're there behind that for you about. What, what's happening, what they should be aware of and, you know, because I mean. Flood notwithstanding, I mean, we get a part, a short part rain and there's erosion under the back roads. And it's not unusual for a road to be temporarily added connection. From a tree that you call when it's when the tree goes across the road.
They call Rodney the fire department.
But, you know, but the people know that's who is with the dog.
I don't know if you're supposed to be calling. That's how it happens. And we take care of it.
Right.
And I've got my chainsaw ready. Simon's got his. We've got, we just bought two new Milwaukee battery operated chainsaws from a part of.
We've had a bunch of trees come.
Yeah.
We just go down with our own chainsaw.
Well, well, that's.
That's.
But if you're not accustomed to using a chainsaw.
So Janet, what's, what goes on is Eliza and I actually, before this ever happened, we realized after the power outage. In town, we've got a lot of new people here that don't know what to do.
Right.
And that we should have meetings on survival. And one of the things that have pointed out to me is the emergency director was concentrating that we could have a snow event here. We'll power out for a couple of weeks. And that's pretty serious.
Yeah.
And that, that means the pump's gonna be out of gas. Down in South Walton with your backup.
We talked about this and about the state.
Winter.
You know, gas, gas storage in different places for these kind of things, people running generators and. Gas, you know.
Well, they're gonna be out. How do they stay warm? We've got new people who don't use wood stoves. They probably don't even have an operating insurance company during the sale, so we're just gonna. So they're sitting there with absolutely no backup. Anyways. Again, went back to the shelter because I kept getting messages. It's more than just the flood.
Right.
Of course, and you're right. We talked about, we should have little, um, survival, a survival meeting. And the other one was, and I just haven't had time, was to have like, uh, with the select board in once. All the people in town.
Right.
Especially showing some of the new people in town. All the. Job opportunities to volunteer here.
Yeah. Yep. Well, you know, how to survive the World Fair. What do you, you know, how do you get home when you?
Make sure you get, I mean, not for me is I make sure I have all my food, gas, everything, so I don't have to be on that road. Last minute.
All right. I think we can, we. Do you want to make the motion to adjourn besides me?
Yes.
We can wrap it up.